Trustees attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you. Trustee Kelly, are you there?
Yes, Chair, hello.
Thank you. Trustee Powell, are you there? Trustee Powell?
Sorry, I am.
Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella, are you there? I've not heard back. Trustee Dipu? Trustee Dipu? And Trustee Chua? Okay, we are good to start the meeting. Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on June 24th, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And please remember, trustees, if you are in the boardroom, turn your desk mics on when you speak. Item 1.1 Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, Our Father and the National Anthem. I now ask staff to start us off with a land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today,
is rich in the history and modern traditions
of many First Nations and the Métis.
from the lands of the Anishinaabe
to the Atawandaran.
the Haudenosaunee.
and the Métis.
these lands surrounding you greatly.
our steeped and indigenous history.
as we gather today
on these treaty lands.
our Catholic social teachings
call us in solidarity
with our indigenous brothers and sisters.
to honor and respect
the four directions.
lands.
waters, plants, animals,
and ancestors
that walked before us.
all of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
gifted to us by our Creator God.
the acknowledge and thank
the Mississaugas of the credit First Nation
for being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Superintendent Loft, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father and the National Anthem?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. If you could please join me in the sound of our faith. Lord Jesus, when things aren't going as much as we like, let us turn to you in thankfulness. In times of struggle or uncertainty, help us come to insightfulness. If our viewpoint is too limited, may we be blessed with greater thoughtfulness. No matter how events unfold, please grant us hope through faithfulness. And if everyone could please join me in our Our Father. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Superintendent Loft, our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for a mover, please. Moved by Vice Chair Agnew. Looking for a seconder?
I'll second it.
Trustee Ohan Chanara seconds. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella, are you there? Trustee Powell?
I am in favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
I'm in favor.
in favor.
Trustee Kelly?
in favor.
Trustee Murphy, are you there?
Yes, in favor.
Trustee Chua? Trustee McGuire?
in favor.
Trustee Dipu? We have seven in favor. None opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Item number three, declarations of conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight?
Yes, I'd like to declare conflict of interest on the first motion.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Saunders, did you fill that form for declaration? Okay, thank you. Trustee Kelly has sent me a form.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I have received that, yes. So, Trustee Saunders and Trustee Kelly declare conflict of interest on the first motion. Any other conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is action items. We have a single action item tonight, and that is, action item has three parts. We will follow our standard action item process. We will have questions for up to three minutes for clarification. No debate during this time. We shall then take up debate for three minutes. And at that point in time, if any amendment needs to be brought by trustees, we can do that, and then shall call the vote. Item 4.1, 2024-25 Budget Estimates. Superintendent Loft, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, please find attached the final 2024-25 Budget Estimate Report for Action. This report is very similar to the previous one brought at the staff, as part of the staff report at our previous board meeting. Just a couple of changes I'd like to comment on based on some of the discussions we had at the presentation last week. So, when we heard some suggestions regarding the presentation of the staff, on the staff report relating to staff appreciation. So, with respect to this, we've actually moved staff appreciation into a principal discretion account. So, before it was going into a printing account, we've moved it into a principal discretion account to allow some discretion for the principals relating to that item. The second item I just want to draw attention to is some confusion around the 7.4 million relating to special education grant, or the 7.4 million relating to the special education, and the fact that this is in fact a deficit. So, what that means is, we overspend in that area by $7.4 million relative to what we receive in funding. This is higher than our previous year. So, the financial statements that we did back in 2223 in November, we were around the 6.2 million. And back in even 2020, 2021, we were about 4.2 million. So, those were deficits. That means we spend more in spec ed than we're funded for in those areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. And before I place the motion on table, I just want to thank you and your team for working tirelessly over the past few months on this budget estimates. Given the funding levels that we receive, we know that we are grossly underfunded by the province. And I want to thank Director Klein and his staff for carefully looking at all aspects of operations to make sure that we are using the money as per as per what the trustees said in the multi-year strategic plan. So, thank you so much and your team, Superintendent Loft, for putting this together. I will now read the first part of the motion. Resolved that the Holden Catholic District School, can you hear the motion on the screen, please? Okay, thanks. Resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the 2024-25 Salary and Benefit Estimates in the amount of $395,671,357. Trustee Saunders and Trustee Kelly have declared a conflict, so you won't participate in this part. The motion is in order. May I ask for a mover, please? Moved by Vice Chair Agnew. Looking for a seconder?
I can second it, Powell.
Trustee Powell, I shall now place this motion on the table, and I shall open up question period. Trustees, please put up your hands for this particular part of the motion. Three minutes for question time. I see no hands up. So, with that, I shall... Trustee Kennedy, there's a hand up button there. Okay, Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. You have the floor. You have three minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's around the current year that we're in right now. Do we know what the rough deficit is at the moment, the current year?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We plan on coming in, we're not quite sure yet until we get to the end of the year, obviously, Trustee Kennedy. But we're looking to come in around what we had initially had, and that was the balanced budget. So, we may have a partial deficit. It all depends on what the actual funding we receive relating to, and the actual costs we receive relating to the Bill 124, to see what that is. But from what we had control over, about what we talked about back in in December, we should be coming in at roughly what we thought we were. We're on track anyways to what we had, based on information we brought to board last week.
Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you. Do we know why, so occasional teachers currently, it's about, looks like it's almost a million more from May the year before. Do we know the main reasons for that?
I'm sorry, the...
Occasional teachers. It looks like it's about 985,000 above, May of 2024 to May of 2023. It's 985,000 more.
Yeah, that's, that's not in the report though, is it? Are you... Trustee? Can you find it out in the report?
It's on the, on the package from last week.
Superintendent Loft, is the package the same as to last week?
The part with the staff report, it was the same. But I think, now I think I understand. You're mentioning the, the quarter report that we brought, right? The one that ends in May. So, that is, it is a different report.
Go ahead.
I can just briefly mention, even though it's not really related to this directly, but maybe indirectly. Yeah, the, I don't know what else to say, Trustee Kennedy, other than the cost has gone up over that period of time.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Do we know what our FTE is, roughly?
Superintendent Loft?
As to what extent? Do you mean for next year? Do you mean...
Current year.
Again, I wasn't prepared to talk about current year right now.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next question, Trustee Kennedy. Sorry, that's, I don't know.
I'm just trying to get an idea, based on like student ratios to FTE, how do we compare to other, other boards, right? We have, as I know, I looked at the public one. They have specifically how many teachers, elementary, secondary, custodian, and so on and so forth. It's 6,780. Do we know our number of what our FTE is?
Trustee Kennedy, once again, I pointed out many times in many meetings, we are not comparing ourselves to any board. If you want to do it for yourself, if you're talking at this board, you're talking business of this board. I'd like to discuss the matters of this board itself and not compare ourselves to any other board. If you want to do it for your, your own consumption, you can go ahead and do it. But right now, your question to Superintendent Loft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Trustee Kennedy. I believe Adam just looked it up for us, so he'll...
Go ahead. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kennedy. So, for 2324, our total staffing is 3,577. And for 2425, our total is 3,579.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
So, that's, that's instructional and non-instructional.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Next question.
Yeah, just three, Mr. Chair. Just to be fair, we do, we do mention how we are underfunded compared to other boards. So, we kind of do talk about the boards.
We are underfunded, which is been said many times, but we are not comparing details of other boards. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, point of privilege. Could we put microphones on? I can't hear anybody.
Trustee Kennedy can start again?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So, you mentioned part of our plan is, there's kind of two main items. I'm just, I can't seem to find the page. Maybe we can put it on the screen. There was two items. 1,410,000 was the other item.
Can you specify the page?
I can't find the page, but it was, yeah.
Go ahead, Superintendent Loft.
Sorry, trustee, my mic on. And sorry, the question then is...
It looks like we have to put a proposal together of how we, is that, I can't seem to find the page. Is that for 2025-2026?
No.
Or is that for 2024-2025?
Exactly. Superintendent Loft, sorry.
Trustee Kennedy, that's for 2425. So, that's for the upcoming budget year. So, starting in September of this fall to August of next year.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
So, and just wondering, do we have any kind of, I know we've kind of mentioned it, but is there kind of an, an action plan of like how we plan on accomplishing it?
Superintendent Loft? Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The other item too, I was going to put on there, is part of it is, we're, like I've mentioned before, and it might be something I changed for revised, is that we have about $800,000 of our deficit that relates to past capital project that I already have, the budget, or sorry, the, the reserves that are earmarked, specified, approved by board to use for covering up that, or not covering up, but for funding that deficit. So, I might even, for revised estimates, change it just to, to be more transparent as to where our deficit is actually coming from. How we plan on doing it for the upcoming year, the first part, the 410, is again, going back and seeing if we can find additional savings of $410,000, which in a board our size, really, it's saying it's not a huge amount, but we are almost a half billion dollar budget. So, it's a relatively small amount to try to go and find contractual savings throughout the board. On the actual the other side of that, the million dollars or so relating to the well-being and such of staff, there is some ideas that possibly I could we're looking at, so I'm looking at trustee, sorry, trustee to Superintendent Oldman. But part of it is looking at our, our, just our general well-being and such in programs for our staff. To the event of, if we have that and put some money towards that, we may see some decrease in our absenteeism cost. Again, though, this is something that's provincially driven, right? This is something that's, we're working within the confines of a contract that was negotiated centrally, that's impacting, impacting us locally. So, we're trying to do our best to, to obviously work around those essentially negotiated terms.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you. And so, back to those two, those two points, actually, I did find the page, but it's from the previous gen. It's page 70. So, it's probably the same, same information. But it says, it says actually 2025-2026 description. It's just, is it just like a typo? Because it...
Superintendent Loft? Good.
I, I can, I can answer, yeah.
Go ahead.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. So, it is, because the budget that we're reporting is 2425, you have to come out of your deficit two years after that date. So, yes, the plan is for 2526 in this report. We would have had to have a similar thing when we brought our budget for 2324. And in that, it would have been 2425 as, as kind of part of our plan. But this one is, yeah, we technically have two years to kind of rate the ship on this.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Is that because two years we projected a balanced budget? Is that why?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, in the regulations, whenever you're in a compliant deficit position for two consecutive years, then, or in, in any year, sorry, the ministry wants you to get out of that in two years. So, you have to really look at what's, what's causing your deficit, and if any of those components are kind of one-offs and not like inherently built into your, your budget forever. So, because we are showing a compliant deficit for 2425, we have 2526 and 2627 to get ourselves out of that deficit position. And, and this is sort of the plan that we put forward to start working on. So, obviously, absenteeism is an issue provincially wide, and a lot of the boards are working on plans to try and curb this. And so, we, we will be doing that as well. And then, you also notice this year in our budget 20 for 2425, we're, we're still projecting another, a further increase in our supply costs. So, hopefully, we won't see the full utilization of that in 2425, and we can kind of use that to scale, scale us back to a balanced position.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you. And just, and just to follow up. So, does that mean that in two years from now, we have to produce a balanced budget projection or get approval from the minister? Is that what that means?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So, you can only have two years of compliant deficits consecutively, and then you have to be balanced. So, a lot of, a lot of boards are in that position right now and are still struggling to meet that requirement. So, then, yes, they would have to have ministry approval to have that third year of consecutive deficits. Because we, we showed a balanced budget at revised, we don't, we don't fall under that three-year consecutive criteria. So, but if we were to have next year a 2526, another deficit, then we would be required for 2627 to be balanced or give ministry approval.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And just to follow up on the, so there's a slight change to appreciation category from photocopying. Is that the category, supplies and services? So, is that the one? So, that category was, you know, $96,000, and it went to $2,400. Is that the category that's being, it's on page 77 of the previous board meeting package, yeah?
Superintendent Loft? Yeah, I have to look at them. So, give me one second. Do you have it up here, Adam?
77.
77. Instruction. Go ahead.
Sorry, classroom teachers. No, so, what makes up the supplies and services for classroom teachers is primarily travel and other sort of reimbursements for, for employees. So, it looks like we might have just regrouped some, some of it for, for that particular balance for the current year. And then, the printing costs, so where that would show up would be under textbooks and supplies. So, the school base budgets are included in textbooks and supplies. So, the $8 million included in there is the, essentially, it's, it's $4 million of school-based budgets.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
So, just, just in a nutshell then, so, teachers, they, they get a budget, I assume, to start the year with to buy supplies? Would they, is that being cut in anywhere? Or is it the same as last year?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So, so, we give the discretion for the classroom budgets to the school principals. And what we've noticed through consultation this year is that it's kind of inconsistent from school to school on how the principals are distributing the money. Some like to hold more money back, and others like to distribute most of it upfront so that the teachers can buy classroom supplies. So, we are, we, we are working to kind of standardize this across all schools so that teachers from one school to the next can kind of expect to see a similar amount. But for this year, we haven't enforced that specifically. But as Superintendent Loft mentioned last meeting, we did develop the PvP Committee this year. So, we were working with school principals and vice principals to kind of go through this stuff. And that's, that's sort of where it came out, that some schools were providing $100, others were providing $150, some 200. So, definitely working forward to try and standardize that. How we fund the schools is all the same, but we, we allow the schools the latitude to kind of allocate the money as they best feel works for their school community and needs.
Thank you. Your time is up. And so, now, no other trustees. I don't, not see any other trustees' hands up. So, I shall close question time, and I shall now open up debate time. So, trustees, if you'd like to debate the motion on the floor, can we have the motion up, please? Thank you. Trustees, would you like to debate the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I shall, Trustee Kennedy? You would like to debate this item? Okay, go ahead. Hold on. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I see we made a bit of a change. I'm happy about the change, actually, for, for staff appreciation. I just thought it was in that other category. Just have a couple of concerns, and we've talked about them before, like the operating, the reserves, right? So, you know, we're supposed to have around two times our operating budget, which we should have about maybe eight to nine million in there. And unfortunately, we're at five million. So, we're well behind on where we, where we should be there. And just overall, just some concerns, like we, we did use 7 million of reserves two years ago. We used 5 million last year. This year, we might be neutral, which sounds good, maybe zero to 1 million. But the, the operating reserves particularly seem to be, seem to be coming down a lot. So, you know, it looks like we may be able to change the categories a little bit, maybe moving some capital, or there were some add backs last, last meeting. You had some add backs with amortization. So, yeah, that's just the only concern really, a major have is the, is the operating, because 5 million is only one times our, our budget, and that concerns we won't be able to operate one day or something. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. No other trustees' questions? If not, I shall call the vote on the motion in front of us, trustees. This motion was moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Powell. Trustee Powell, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstain.
Sorry. Trustee Murphy?
Abstain.
Trustee Chua? Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Dipu? Trustee Carabella? And trusted, who else? Then, miss anybody? Trustee? Okay, and I will be in favor. So, we have four in favor, one opposed, three abstention. Motion carries. We shall now move on to the next part of this motion, where all trustees will be eligible to the question and debate. I will read the motion and place it on the floor. Resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the 2024-25 Budget Estimates, excluding salary and benefits, in the amount of $99,468,857. May I ask for a mover, please? Vice Chair Agnew moves. Looking for a seconder? Looking for a seconder?
I'll second it.
Who's that? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Yeah, I don't know why I'm yelling, because you can probably hear me fine, but I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. So, the motion moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Ohan Chanara. A motion is in order, placing it on the floor. And so, I shall now open question time for the second part of the motion. Trustees, please put your hand up if you have questions to ask. Three minutes question time. Trustee Kennedy, one second. Hold on, hold on. Hold on. Still time you there. You're the floor.
Just, just, can you just point out specifically where this is in the, like this 99 million, like maybe just put on the screen. I just couldn't find, that's, that's all. That's the only question.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's actually in our EFS reporting. Adam, do we even have that in the report, or is it more? So there's a column, trustee, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. There's a column where we have all of our salaries and benefits that we report to the ministry on, and that's where we take it from. But I think Adam's just looking to see.
Maybe I'll just do a question while, can you maybe just name, like, what are three?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. Is Adam looking for that?
Yeah, it's a little bit complicated. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So on the appendix C, so summary of expenses by expense type.
Okay. Any further question?
So, so, yeah, so, so salaries and benefits are at the top there, the three ninety five, seven eighty one. And then you have to deduct the one, one ten, six, one, seven, increase in employee future benefits, that's down at the bottom. And then basically, the ninety nine is all the other items that make up the four ninety five, one thirty two, two forty two less the salaries and benefits piece. So that's how you get the ninety nine.
Kennedy, you have?
So just, that's like supplies and services, PD fees and contracts, that's?
Yeah, it's all, it's all.
That's what I know what we're voting on.
Yep, yep.
Thanks.
Computers.
Okay. Thank you. Trustees, any further questions? This is question period, we have three minutes. Trustee Kennedy is done. Seeing no other questions, I shall now open debate time, three minutes debate. Trustees, would you like to debate this or have a comment? Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up? Okay, I'll load it, okay. Seeing none, I shall call the vote on the motion you see in front of us, trustees. This motion was moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by trustee Ohan Chanada. With that, I shall call the vote. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Mr. Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Chua? Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Powell?
Hey, I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor. So we have five in favor, three opposed, motion carries. We shall now move on to the third motion. Can we have that on the screen, please? I will read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the twenty twenty four, twenty five in-year deficit elimination plan in the amount of one million dollars, one million, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. May I ask for a mover? Looking for a mover, please?
I can move it, Powell.
Trustee Powell moves, Vice Chair Agnew seconds. Okay, thank you, trustees, for moving and seconding. I shall now open up question period. Give me a second for resetting timers. Okay, trustees, you have questions? Trustee Kennedy, your hand is up, is it for this or for something else?
This.
Okay, trustee Kennedy, you have, you have the floor, three minutes starts.
Thank you, just one question, just a question. So the four hundred and ten thousand is to review non-contractual expenses and reduce contractual expenses by changing service levels? Just have a question, does that mean maintenance? Like, just wondered, what, what is changing service levels and what specifically would you be reducing?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It could be that trustee Kennedy could be reducing service levels in the school through maintenance-type items when we do our, our maintenance on items, our operating-type expenditures. It's pretty much open-ended to finding it across all areas of our organization. So it's not limited to facilities-type expenditures, but it definitely could be, given that's one of our larger expenditure areas.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. You have further questions?
You just, and then in the other category, enhance attendance management to help mitigate sick leave and staff well-being. Kind of asked earlier, but is there any kind of working group or surveys or anything to try to look at the staff well-being?
Superintendent Loft?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, there's actually a provisional working group that came out of the last collective agreement, actually, that's looking at this area on sick leave in general. So there is a provincial working group that's, that's looking at this. Because again, it's not a Hall and Catholic problem, it's a provincial problem. So it's, it's in every school board's best interest to, to look at the, the, the reasons why these are developing the way they are.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Okay, thanks, trustee Kennedy, you're done your question time. Up next is trustee Saunders, trustee Saunders, you have the?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to superintendent Loft. Yeah, can you describe to us what, what you're going to be doing to save this million dollars? What, what plans do you have in place? Or can you describe what process you're going to be doing to do, to save this money?
Director Klein or superintendent Loft? Director Klein, start.
Well, I think through you, Chair, the first senior team will be wrestling and, and working with that. Clearly, we're going to be in conversation with the Ministry of Education as well in terms of moving forward with a thoughtful response. Beyond that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Loft and see if he's got any thoughts from what he's gathered from the ministry or colleagues. If we're not alone.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If we actually look at page, pages in your report, page number three, where it does it outline the financial position as a, the draft, what we had initially. Sorry, I'm looking at the previous one, let me just go to the current one. It's still in that one, just to tell you the right page, it probably still is page three. It's the one that has the summary of our, of our reserves. Just want to see, because I had both reports open, trustee Kennedy. Is it there? Yeah, there it is, okay, it is, I had the right one. So if you look on there, so this is where I was trying to mention before with respect to our past approved capital projects. So you really, you see that the decrease in our operating reserves is only six hundred and twenty two thousand, right? It's not the one point four million that you see on the bottom there, it's six hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. So really, the remaining part of that, eight hundred thousand or so, is related to past approved projects, which we already have our reserve set aside for those projects. But to answer or attempt to answer trustee Saunders' question is it will be something that we'll be looking at as a board, as an organization, for this takes place in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. That's when the implementation goes. Having said that, we will be working on it throughout the year, trying obviously to get our current deficit down for the current year, if there's some things that we can do in the current year. But really, the expectation is to have that ready for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Thank you, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, so it just looks like this is a made-up number, like there's, there's nothing to support it.
Trustee Saunders, I'll, I will ask you to be very careful about the words you use here. This budget that you estimate that you see has been the culmination of months of work. So to, for you to make a statement is irresponsible. I'll repeat, it's irresponsible. So I'm going to ask you to be very careful about the word that you use. You would, would you like to rephrase those words?
Yeah.
Please rephrase your word.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there doesn't seem to be a basis for this million dollars. Like, I would have expected there'd be a plan, we're going to do this and that, and we're going to create a million. Like, right now, it just seems like a number that there doesn't seem to be a support for.
The Saunders, let me try to help you here. Are you looking for something specific which you'd like staff to ask? I'm not understanding what you're trying to say, you're just trying to say it's a number in some extent. Would you like to dig into some particular area and then staff will try to help you out?
Yeah, well, what I was looking for was the, we've got this million-dollar number. So I'd imagine there would be a plan or something behind that. How did we come up with a million dollars? Here's what we anticipate doing, so something along that lines.
Let me see if staff can help you out with that, Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I think I've answered that, where it's something we're looking at as a team. Obviously, as we all know, I've already mentioned, trustee Kennedy mentioned something similar, Mr. Chair. We said how there's a working group throughout the province that will be tackling this to attempt to lower our oversubscribed use of sick leave in our board and the cost that it brings to us as an organization. Obviously, when the largest part of your deficit or a large part of your deficit is related to a certain area, you're going to look at that area and try to address it. And that's what we're trying to do. How we're going to go and do that, trustee Saunders, we'll let you know when we have the actual plan. But that's where we're going to be focusing on, and that's what we're going to be doing.
Thank you, go ahead.
So how do you come up with a number? I don't understand. If, if you're going to be looking at it, how do you come up with this number? There, there must be a basis for this number.
Director Klein, would you like to start?
Start off by saying, first of all, that I think it would be actually irresponsible for us to start at this point before we've having this even approved, to be saying, we're going to be saving by X, Y, and Z. Certainly, to save money, I think we all understand, could involve cutbacks, pullback on certain things. And I don't think this is the, the time or the place to be able to do that. I think it would cause, I don't think it would be beneficial at all. In terms of the number itself, clearly, our numbers are aspirational. Clearly, these are things that go back to expertise and experience that our, our staff and finance has. I can ask superintendent Loft if he can add a little bit more to it, but I wanted to make that very clear as well.
Superintendent Loft?
I'm not really sure what more I can say, to be honest. It's something that we put on there, the ministry requires us to put an area that we're going to look on, trustee Saunders. If that's what you're asking us, then that's what we're going to be looking on. I do not have all the answers right this minute to have for that type of questioning. It's why it's in twenty five, twenty six, and we're going to be taking a year to try to address that issue going forward. I'm really not sure what more I can say to that than what I've already said.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft, trustee Saunders, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, but, but it's a specific number, and it's a specific line, and it's a specific everything, and you're asking us to approve it. So I would expect some kind of specific plan rather than just a aspirational number.
Thank you, Director Klein.
As I've said before, it's through your chair, I think a specific plan about rectifying this issue, which would involve hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of cutbacks, would be absolutely irresponsible at this stage.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft, would you like to add anything to that or? Okay, trustee Saunders, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, just, yeah, but that's what the budget's all about. Like, it's, it's, you're, you've come here, you're asking for our approval, and to say, well, it's irresponsible to substantiate numbers, that, that works against every principle of budgeting. So I don't understand that answer at all.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, we have been, this is not the first time we are doing estimates, but we have been doing every year similar kind of estimates. But superintendent Loft, you can help me here.
Yeah, I can. Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know, trustee Saunders, what you're looking for. I guess you're asking for, you're asking for a detailed plan as to what to get the million dollars. Is that what you're asking for right now, trustee Saunders? Just want to understand.
Yeah, how you arrived at a million dollars.
How we arrived at a million dollars. Well, we looked at the expenditures we had, we had an estimate as to how much we essentially possibly could save by improving or attempting to improve, using a lot of external and internal mechanisms to address sick leave, just as each board in the province is doing. So if that answers your question.
And what would those be? What would those mechanisms be?
I need your time. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Well-being, like we've already said, trustee Saunders, I'm not sure if, if you, if you heard me say that or not, because I've heard the question a few times, so I'm not sure if you heard the response or not. So well-being of staff, looking at it from a attendance support perspective that we're looking at as well as an organizational attendance support program, maybe more so than we're currently doing right now, looking at it from that perspective. If that's the type of answers you're looking for, I'm confused. Like, if that's what it is, then that's what we're looking at in the short term anyway.
Director Klein wants to add something.
I really, I'm going to, through you, Chair, I'm going to support the superintendent by saying, once again, I, I think these are aspirational. I think the superintendent has given a sense of where the monies come from. I think it would be irresponsible a year and a half ahead, when so much could change, likely will change, for us to articulate this evening, before this has even been approved, before our budget's been approved, to say, yes, in order to save things, we would be cutting, cutting back on, choosing not to go down a certain road. That would cause, I think, for staff and for students and for parents and for the community, for them to make assumptions that might not lead to that in the end. I don't think that would be productive, to be, to be quite honest. And I know that might not satisfy everybody, but I also think that that is probably the most prudent thing to do.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, you have?
Yeah, but that's precisely what's happening. You're putting a million dollars in an area that will drastically impact teachers. So I, I can't see how it can't be anything but causing stress. So that's why you need to, to sort of delineate how this was arrived at, so that you can alleviate that stress.
I'd just, I'd only echo that.
That was a comment. That was only a comment, it wasn't a question. So trustee Saunders, was, do you have any further question? Okay, thank you. Trustee Kennedy, I see your hand up there, but you already had your question time. So we are moving on, since trustees do not have further questions, I will open up debate time on this item. And trustee Kennedy, your hand is up for debate?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, one second. Go. Go ahead, you're the floor.
Good. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I do appreciate that we have, looks like two main items, but there's a lot in those items to try to bring the deficit down. But when we look at specifically, oh, it just went away, occasional, looks like occasional teachers or maintenance of sick leave, it, we, we did go up a million dollars from May thirty first this year to May thirty first last. So we're up a million, and we're also budgeting for next year one point three million more than we budgeted for last year. And on top of that, we're going to cut back a million. So we're going up a million three and then cut back a million, it just seems, it definitely seems aspirational, like it's, it's quite high. So that's my only concern. Now, you don't have a plan today, but maybe you can share it as we go along next year. Because it, it, I can see it being a huge, huge number. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, Superintendent Loft.
And that's actually a very good question, trustee Kennedy. And it's, it's pretty, the following year, right, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. So you're correct, like, we weren't, we increased our sick leave budget accordingly, right? Like, we, we did it, we, we didn't, we increased it, our, we saw what it was, we're not funded for it, but we increased it knowing that you saw the trends as well. So that's why we kind of almost need this year that we have coming up to kind of see a way to address some of this, because it's not sustainable for us as a board to keep having these expenditures. So that was a very good observation and actually proof that what we're trying to do is look at our trends and adjust our budgets accordingly.
Make it appreciate.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, trustee Kennedy, thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Just trying to say thank you for the response.
Okay, thanks.
You interrupted.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, I see no other trustees hand up. So I shall now call the vote on the motion, can we have the motion up, please? Trustees, the motion is up on the screens. It was moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by trustee Powell, and with that, I shall call the vote on this item. Trustee Ohan Chanada, how do you vote?
I'm in favor, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Mr. Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Chua? Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Kennedy?
Opposed.
And I'm in favor. We have six in favor, two opposed, no abstention, motion carries. I want to thank all trustees for a good discussion and debate on, on this budget estimates over the past couple of months. We shall now move on to resolution regarding absentees. We have trustee Carabella who's absent, we have trustee Kelly, Deepu, and trustee Chua who's absent. May I have a motion to excuse trustee Carabella, trustee Deepu, and trustee Chua, looking for a mover, please?
I'll move it. Trustee Murphy?
Trustee Murphy moves, looking for a second, please? Vice Chair Agnew, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Shall now move on to the adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Looking for a second, or anybody online?
I can second, Powell.
Trustee Powell? Okay, trustee Powell, seconds, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Before we go to closing, I just want to wish everybody, all our staff and students and trustees, a nice summer and enjoyable and safe summer. So thank, thank, thanks, everybody, for this great meeting. Director Klein, please lead us in the closing prayer.
Thank you, Chair. Today, the twenty fourth of June marks the Feast of John the Baptist. It's an important day, particularly for Frank Ontarians and Quebecois and other. an important day, particularly for Franco-Ontarians and Quebecois, another Franco-Canadian. So I would like to lead us in this prayer, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. God, our strength and our hope, grant us the courage of John the Baptist, constantly to speak the truth, boldly to rebuke vice and injustice, and patiently to suffer for the truth's sake. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you, and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you for a great meeting. Good night.
Go Oilers.
Thank you.